Okay, good evening, everybody. We are going to get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Upper Dublin School District Annual Reorganization Meeting of Board of School Directors. I will call this meeting to order. If everyone could please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Evans, would you please call the role for holdover board members only, please?
Ms. Evans?
Present.
Ms. Iannetti?
Present.
Ms. Sherpier?
Present.
Mr. Sirota?
Present.
All present, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we will now begin with the election of a temporary president. So nominations are in order for the office of temporary president.
I will nominate Tia Sherpier as our temporary president.
Are there any other nominations? All right, if there are no other nominations, can I please have a motion to close nominations?
I make a motion to close nominations.
Motion by Ms. Iannetti. There a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Evans. All in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So since there is only one nomination for the office of temporary president, all in favor of Mrs. Sherpier for temporary president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you to my board colleagues and thank you, Mr. Legman. Just so that everybody's aware, this is a standard protocol when we go have a change of the guard, so to speak. So I'll be taking on the role of temporary president until the new president is selected. And one more item that I'd like to, that's not necessarily on our agenda, but I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Lori Smith. She has started on Monday and we're very excited to have her. We also are very, very grateful to Dr. Feeley for being a fantastic interim. And we hope that you will have an opportunity in the next month to interact and get to know Dr. Smith. So welcome to Upper Dublin. All right, all right, and now let's get to our organizational reorg meeting. So we're here for our new board members to administer the oath of office and to welcome them officially. The board would like to recognize that Mr. Wallach is unable to attend tonight's meeting in person and he's joining our meeting virtually. And if you look at the screen, you will see him waving at you enthusiastically, even though he does feel rather lousy, I think. And this is permissible by our Board Policy 006. In addition, one of our new board members is not able to join us this evening, but did provide a written statement, and I will read that to you. I'm writing, and this is from Ms. Barvia. I'm writing to inform you that I am unfortunately unable to attend the December 6th Board Reorganization Meeting. I have a business trip beginning the morning of December 6th that has been planned for several months and which I am contractually obligated to attend and cannot reschedule. I intend to be sworn in promptly upon my return and will attend the Finance Committee Meeting on December 13th. Thank you, and I look forward to serving the Upper Dublin community. So Ms. Barvia will take the oath of office at a later date prior to the next meeting of the board. So next, the oath of office, which will be administered to the recently elected board members by the Honorable Patricia Savarano. And she's hiding there. Something that's worth mentioning is that Ms. Savarano has been, or the Honorable Judge has served this community for many, many, many years, and she will move on the beginning of next year to greener pastures. I'm sure that she will be serving, continuing to serve the community in some capacity. But we are very grateful for all you've done for this community over so many, many years of service. I also want to note that Mr. Wallach was administered the oath of office earlier today. And at this point, I would like to invite Mary Beth Thomas, Alima Redding, and Stu Warshower to come forward for the oath of office and join our judge by the microphone here in the front.
And I can speak up? All right, if you'll each, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations to you all and welcome.
And I'd like to invite our new board members to take a seat behind the table. And Judge Savarano, thank you again for being with us. Thank you very much. All right, as our newly elected board members are seated, let me see where my, yes, all right, back to here. So at this point, since this is a legislative meeting, there's an opportunity for public Is there any public participation related to the agenda items only? So this is only for items on the reorg meeting agenda. And the points on the agenda are election of board officers and then three items under the business recommendation in item K of the agenda. There will be another opportunity under item L for the public participation for non-agenda items. So if anybody wants to speak to agenda items, please come up to the microphone. You have four minutes, and we ask that you state your name and where in the district you reside.
Anita Brister, Fort Washington. So by agenda items, you mean the new board members that were sworn in as part of the agenda, correct? So I'm going to start with a meeting I missed, but I did, I thought the board's statement was a good one, and this is just part of the statement. This is from November 20th, and the board said, "The board is without question opposed to antisemitism and any other religious or cultural discrimination or intolerance of any type against members of any community." I certainly agree with that. I'm glad the board agrees with it. The whole rest of the statement was also, I think, worth reading. But the problem here is, I felt that the apology from Ms. Barvia at the other November meeting, it left some questions. Basically, sharing an anti-Israel webinar, and I think it's safe to say it was one-sided, it could be considered antisemitic, could be considered propaganda, was incredibly offensive and hurtful to many in the community. Many of you probably know, maybe you know or don't know, I'm not Jewish, I'm Catholic, but it's offensive to me. I think it was troubling, to say the least, and then the second troubling part to me was, it wasn't entirely honest, the apology, because originally, she told people that it was just, she was tagged, someone put it on her page. And I am like the last person who knows a lot about Facebook, but I know the difference between tagging and when you share something. And when you share something, which is actually what she did, it kind of looks like you endorse it, kind of looks like you support what's going to be in that, I'm going to call it anti-Israel propaganda webinar, all right? So that wasn't, if you're not honest in your apology, it kind of loses credibility for me. So I just don't think her, those recent actions and the controversy resulting from it and the hurt resulting from it really are in accord with the board's very good statement of November 20th. And I think even before you made that statement, I mean, you know, you know I criticize the board a lot for certain things? I've never criticized you for antisemitism, ever, nor would I have any need to before this month, okay? So it's troubling, the whole thing is troubling to me. I think the post was offensive and insensitive and upsetting. How much time do I have? Okay. All right, well, I have a bunch more, but I want to just interrupt my own self because I heard something just on the radio on the way over here, and I just want to make a quick quote from Alan Dershowitz, who is on the radio tonight, because he knows more than I do. And this was, this is a direct quote that I just got, whatever, a few minutes ago. And I think he might have this in his latest book. I'm sure he has some book on it. He says that the DEI movement is an incubator of antisemitic, whatever, propaganda, I might have left out a word here, on college campuses. I'm going to read that again. "The DEI movement is an incubator of antisemitic propaganda," or whatever, I might have messed up one word of the quote, "on college campuses." I think we, and maybe all school boards, need to think about that. It's a big topic, I'm not saying we can get into it all tonight. If he's right, and he's Jewish, and he's a longtime attorney, we need to think about that. Is the DEI movement an excuse for getting away with antisemitism? Because if it is, Upper Dublin should distance yourself from that, or clean it up, or something. It's something to think about and get more information about. I would like the board to address one other thing, well, I'll save it for a second.
Mr. Lind on Summit Avenue, Fort Washington, I'd like to make a direct comment to the nominational part of the agenda. I think, I know for myself, I think some of the board members, and I know that many of the people in the audience, would like to know, before the nomination of a person on this, for these elected board officers, I would like you to tell the audience and the rest of the board members whether or not you intend to vote for Ms. Barbara, who has been selected, not elected, which offends me tremendously. Please let us know before you raise your hand whether you intend to vote for this person or not.
I don't think it's on.
And Ms. Evans, can you restart the timer? Yes, you may, go ahead, thanks.
Hi, I'm responding to the first statement that was just made by the audience member.
Can you please state your name and where in the district you live?
My name is Sarah, and I live in the Upper Dublin District. I stand before you today as a nurse who has vowed to protect all lives, and as a bereaved mother who has held the body of her own deceased child in my arms. It is an indescribable pain that many mothers in Palestine are experiencing on a horrifying scale. There are 8,000 children who have been murdered in the past two months due to Israeli airstrikes justified by the dehumanization of Palestinians by Israeli propaganda. This is about the humanization of Palestinians.
Excuse me, could you, could you please address the board?
The webinar that Ms. Barvia was posting about, this is what I'm addressing. As we stand here in a school today, 262 schools have been bombed by Israeli airstrikes in the past two months. The people here opposing the school board member for posting about the webinar have also justified in their minds the ongoing genocide of tens of thousands of Palestinians.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask members of the, of the audience to please hold comment.
... as collateral damage due to the dehumanization of Palestinians. It is absolutely essential that we, as human beings, rehumanize all human beings, regardless of their race, ethnicity, or national origin. It is absolutely essential that we think that each one of those children has our own so that we may empathize with the horrors being committed in Gaza on our dime. The consequence of suppressing humanization, as listed in the webinar, of people is the murder of the six-year-old boy in Chicago and the shooting of three students in Burlington, Vermont by people who are believing the dehumanizing propaganda of Palestinians. Anyone saying that this is antisemitism to humanize people, please listen to these quotes from Jewish scholars and the Torah that prove otherwise. "Where a Jew finds suffering, we are commanded to identify with the sufferer and alleviate their pain," by Rabbi Bradley Shavitt Artson.
Can you please, hold on one second. Please, members of the audience, can you please hold your comments and let the speaker speak? Others will have that opportunity too.
"That which is hateful to you, do not do it to your fellow." This is the entire Torah, go and learn it, from the Balbonian Talmud, Shabbat 31A. "Better is the one who is slow to anger than the one who is mighty. Better is the one who controls the self rather than conquers a city. Peace be to you both, peace to your house, and peace to all that you possess." That is what true Judaism is. That is not what, this, the webinar is not antisemitism because it is about the same values that are talked about in the Torah. It's about promoting the same values that we all believe in of humanizing human beings. Thank you.
Excuse me, can, can I ask members, you know, the audience, to give, give attention to the person at the microphone? Okay. All right, I'm calling, I'm calling the meeting to order, please, please, please. Can we call the meeting to order? Or I'll have to adjourn the meeting. Please, can we adjourn, can we, please, members of the audience, can you please show your Upper Dublin pride and dignity and recognize the person at the podium? Go ahead.
Andy Kessler for Washington. At the November 15th Board Meeting, I presented to you a petition at the time, was signed by over 1,600 people. As of today, that petition has over 2,500 signatures. The petition was started to serve notice to this board that a newly elected school board member, Tricia Barvia, had posted a link to a webinar being hosted and moderated by several notable antisemites, and requested Ms. Barvia apologize for her lack of judgment in this regard and abstain from taking the oath of office. While Ms. Barvia offered an apology at that board meeting, it fell far short. In November, she explained that she shared this particular post because, quote, "My sharing of that post came from that place of compassion for people I know who are also suffering," quote. Hamas's attack on October 7th was the worst terrorist attack in Israel's history and the single deadliest day for Jews since the Holocaust. Women were raped and mutilated, babies were placed into ovens to die. Senator Jackie Rosen was a group, was one of a group of 40 United States senators who screened footage from October 7th in a closed-door session, and he offered the following statement that is particularly appropriate to respond to Ms. Barvia's, quote, "concern about people who are, quote, hurting." Senator Rosen stated, quote, "Given the effort by some individuals and organizations around the world to deny what happened that day, it was important that, as policymakers, we bear witness to the full extent of the atrocities committed by Hamas. It does not seem that bearing witness to those atrocities and the effect it has had and continues to have on this community is on Ms. Barvia's radar." Ms. Barvia, in fact, is hosting a conference in Boston on January 5th, 2024, and at that conference, she's hosting a woman by the name of Autumn Allen. Ms. Allen also has a history of posting and promoting antisemitic information. She has promoted, quote, "resistance to Israel," which parrots language used by Hamas. This school district and the community deserves better than what Ms. Barvia has to offer. While I am proud to stand here as a member of Upper Dublin's Jewish community, it is appalling to me that in 2023, I do so to discuss an issue as ugly and disturbing as this. It is an incredibly sad commentary that this information about this official came to light only after the ballots were cast in the last election. We should demand more of our local party leaders, Chris Pastore and the Upper Dublin Democratic Committee, in vetting those individuals whose names appear on the ballot. They too bear responsibility for this untenable situation. By stating her intention to take the oath to accept her seat on this board, Ms. Barvia continues to demonstrate a total and utter lack of awareness of the pain which she has caused and which she continues to cause to this community. Given the quote-unquote "thought leaders" who she has endorsed, we demand again that she not take the oath of office. If she lacks the courage to do so, this board must ensure that Ms. Barvia is not permitted to serve on the Education Committee or the Policy Committee where her lack of judgment could directly impact what we teach our children. Please recognize that we are not looking for commentary from the board on this situation, rather, we are more concerned with how members of this board act with respect to these concerns. Those actions will speak volumes to the Jewish community as to the sincerity of the board's response to this unacceptable circumstance. Thank you.
Hello, honored members of Upper Dublin School Board. My name is Osman. I am a resident of Upper Dublin. I'm not going to reveal that information, not required. Other members have only introduced themselves by their first name. Excuse me, ma'am, may I request quorum?
Please, please, I'm calling the meeting to order, please, please. The only, only request is that we have what part of Upper Dublin you live in. Could be Treasure, Ambler...
Ambler, 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 Ambler. Excuse me, sir.
You're making statements without any proof. I live in the Arrowhead neighborhood, sir. Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you, yeah, so that you continue to do it to me.
Please, please, I'm calling the meeting to order.
I apologize, I apologize. May I have the time reset, please? Ma'am, this was interrupted clearly.
Yes, you may reset. Ms. Evans, can you reset the timer?
I'm bringing this matter before the Upper Dublin School District for the same reason that the first person spoke about, so it is board business. As I am made aware, Tricia Barvia is being asked to resign because of a post to a link about a webinar entitled, which has been omitted from other statements, "Getting to the Root: Sharing Stories and Humanizing Palestine." I want to put particular emphasis on the term "humanizing." I would actually like to thank the board member for actually providing this link and encouraging free speech, which we had members today taken oath to the Constitution, which enshrines and protects explicitly the freedom of speech, but it seems as though other respected audience members don't seem to believe this themselves. I want to state that every human, regardless of their nationality, race, or religion, is a human being, deserving of humanization, and that equating such a notion as humanizing another with antisemitism is absurd, asinine, and very telling to that which those who hold such a position may in fact truly believe. I openly perceive such a cheap tactic and trick to censor and deprive a board member of their inalienable right to free speech is exactly that. In addition to humanizing human beings, the event summary states that it aims to address critical topics such as structural inequity, colonial history, and the ongoing genocide and ethnic cleansing of Palestinians. The UN, excuse me, may I have my time back for being interrupted once again?
Please keep going, please keep going.
The, the UN and several human rights organizations such as Doctors Without Borders, Save the Children, and Amnesty International, along with many other human rights organizations, have defined what is happening in Palestine, even before this current war, as an ethnic cleansing and genocide. Prominent Jewish Israeli historians, authors, Holocaust survivors, human rights activists, and journalists such as Elan Papé, Norman Finkelstein, Gabor Maté, Gideon Levy, Judith Beller, and the entire Organization for the Jewish Voice of Peace, which numbers 400,000, have all described the situation in Palestine as an ethnic cleansing, implementation of apartheid, and a genocide. I find it appalling that despite the webinar not even, well, there appears to be a knee-jerk response to immediately suppress alternative viewpoints and effectively dehumanize the Palestinian people, which has been echoed by significant Israeli officials in the following statements. Benjamin Netanyahu, Prime Minister of Israel, and the one who lied to US Congress in 2002 about weapons of mass destruction in Iraq, quote, "Remember, he did lie in 2002." There's recorded testimony, just like this. Remember Amalek, a biblical story where even the murder of infants is justified? Yoav Galant, Israeli Defense Minister, "blockading off food, water, electricity, and fuel. Also, we are fighting human animals, and we are acting accordingly. We will eliminate everything, they will regret it." It's not in the 2017 Charter. Isaac Herzog, President of Israel, "It is an entire nation out there that is responsible." A statement justifying collective punishment. Giori Elan, former head of the Israeli National Security Council, "The state of Israel has no choice but to turn Gaza into a place that is temporarily or permanently impossible to live in. Creating a severe humanitarian crisis in Gaza is a necessary means to achieve the goal. Gaza will become a place where no human being can exist." Galit Estel Adbarian, Israeli writer and politician currently serving as a member of the Knesset for Likud, "Invest this energy in one thing, erasing Gaza off the face of this earth. The Gazan monsters will fly to the southern fence and go into Egypt or die." The Likud Party slogan, "Between the sea and the Jordan, there will only be Israeli sovereignty." I've heard that one as well, right, which includes the West Bank. Moshe Faglin, Israeli politician activist and a leader of the Libertarian Zionist Party Zehtut, "There is one and only solution, to destroy Gaza like Dresden and Hiroshima. Israel's rule shall be restored to the place." An article in 972, an Israeli magazine who sources our conversations with seven current and former members of the Israeli Intelligence Committee, including military intelligence and Air Force personnel, have stated that the intended objective of the current bombing campaign in Gaza is to attack power targets. We know that the Israeli military developed something called the Dahia Doctrine by the former IDF Chief of Staff Gadi Eisenkot, which states that "You must destroy an entire, or make a civilian population so miserable that they will actually overthrow their leaders." So the answer is quite clear, this is a genocide.
Sir, your time is, it has expired. Before the next speaker comes to the microphone, I'd like to remind everybody that the comments need to be about the agenda item, right? What? What? It is important that you address what you want the board to know that has not already been communicated. So please, we understand that this is a challenging issue for many of you, and we'd like you to speak if you want to add to the information that you want the board to have. I also want to make clear that it's not up to board to make a decision here. This is, this decision rests with the elected board member themselves. Go ahead.
Bruce Buckman, Fort Washington. For the last 20 years, I've been involved with what I'm going to say is DEI. I've run the Top Soccer Program in Upper Dublin, which is an inclusion activity where we take children with special needs and we allow them to play soccer and interact with our other children from the community and better themselves. That's diversity, that's inclusion, that's equality. Everybody has a fair chance to do things. When you, but when you say that you want to destroy a country and push them into the ocean, that's not diversity, that's not inclusion, and that doesn't stand with the policies of the Upper Dublin Pride and the Upper Dublin School Board, and we can't have people like that on our board. They're not providing diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Hi, Jaclyn Ackerman, Ambler. I just prepared something. People make mistakes, and at times they should be, and at times they should be forgiven, but there are consequences for mistakes. I do not believe that our newly elected board member, Tricia Abbarvia, is ready to be a board member of the Upper Dublin School District. The horrific events that happened to the Israelis and Jews on October 7th has thrown the Jewish community into a deep state of paralysis, sadness, but what occurred next on American soil and around the world is sickening, devastating, and brings many of us back to the darkest days in Jewish history, the Holocaust. My son was studying abroad on October 7th, and while I knew he would be safe because Israel goes to great lengths to protect their citizens, I knew that it wouldn't, this would not end there. Antisemitism has been around and has been hiding in all corners. It has been brewing in the Upper Dublin School District for quite some time. In fact, my son, who was in Israel at the time this war began, was also the victim of antisemitism here at the Upper Dublin School District in 2021, 2022. You have a Jew knows, "We're going to Jew you down," kike, and the list goes on. Any person I told could not believe that this would happen in the Upper Dublin School District. They would say, "No way, UD has such a big Jewish population." Yes, way. It happened, and we took my son out of the Upper Dublin School District and placed him at our Hebrew Academy. We would not let students and the admin, admin at the school break his spirit. He's a proud to be Jewish and saw it for what it was, and I'm proud of him for it. He was not silent, and I, for one, am not going to be silent either. Antisemitism in all forms should not be tolerated by any means. Let's call it what it is, it's Jew hatred. This needs, this needs to end now. Jewish people don't feel safe. I cannot sit within this amazing, warm, and loving community knowing that a school board member who was elected to serve our students has seen such deep-rooted antisemitism. If I were in her place, which I would never be, I would have resigned because that is what a person who has good morals and values does. They realize a community is hurting from their comments and their push for pro-Palestinian agenda, which is to erase all Jews. They would realize that ten, that thousands of signatures were garnered in support of her resignation. Mind you, Ms. Abbarvia's Facebook post inviting students, parents, and teachers of Upper Dublin to this propaganda push event happened two days after she was elected, which is not lost on me. But she puts down her foot and says, "I'm not leaving, I'm a good person who made a mistake." This was not just a mistake. She's an adult who was elected to serve our community, who is also employed as a DEI leader, who knows better, which leads me to believe that this intent, this was intentional and not an error. What she posted was way to incite more hate and was a vehicle to infuse our schools with Jew hatred. This does not serve our community. A good person, a level-headed person, would realize that they are not ready to serve this community when you just unleash the beast on them. Please resign. There is no place for hate here for, for any, and for any population, and there's no room for your agenda. There's room for learning history and teaching our children about it, not indoctrinating them with made-up rhetoric. New York City Public Schools and the Oakland Unified School District have already made some grave decisions about the teaching of the pro-Palestinian agenda, and they have seen what happens. Teachers having to barricade themselves in rooms, walkouts, et cetera. Let not, let's not let this happen to Upper Dublin. We are better than this. Leaders need to lead, and Ms. Abbarvia is not a leader. It is the Upper Dublin School District's responsibility to protect their Jewish students. This should include education on actual history, what modern antisemitic tropes look like, what antisemitic, antisemitism is and what it is not. It is time to educate because if any of our children end up like the TikTok generation in colleges like Penn, Harvard, Princeton, Columbia, et cetera, will be on our way to more trouble, not only as a community but as a nation. Teach love, not hate. Teach good, not evil. Teach history and facts, not fiction and propaganda. I want to point out one more thing while I'm up here.
Time has expired.
Jenny Vitella, Ambler. First, I just want to say I'm sorry to my Jewish friends here and my neighbors for their hurt, the bullying, and the fear you are feeling. Please know you are not alone, and you have the support of many, many in UD. The statement by the board on 11/20/23 was great. We agree. We have policies and practices in place that stay the same. The question becomes why? Why did this take six weeks? What are we, and what are we doing about it? Where is the condemnation of the actions and brutality perpetrated on our Israeli friends? Where is the outreach and support to the members of our Jewish community and their kids attending UD schools? Where is the condemnation of the actions of a potential new colleague? Have we gotten so political that we can't condemn actions that are at a minimum hateful, I mean hurtful and insensitive? The timing of the public post on Facebook by the school board member-elect is telling. The post seems to be, at best, completely tone-deaf to the suffering and fear experienced by our Jewish community, and at worst, deeply rooted in hate. There are many who feel that there's not enough, not even a thought about how hurtful this post would be to the community for which they just were elected to represent. We don't all have to agree with everyone all the time, but we do need leaders who try and understand what the Jewish community is feeling, their fears, especially post-10 October 7th. Clearly, this member isn't listening or hearing, or maybe doesn't completely understand the community for which she, they are about to represent. That brings me to the horrific graffiti found in one of our UD bathrooms, "From the River to the Sea." To the kids, do the kids, does our community understand what that says to our Jewish friends? The implication is that Jewish state should not exist, and they are felt by many to be antisemitic. What has been done? Has this person guilty of this defacing our public property been identified, disciplined, educated? When I was growing up in Upper Dublin, we celebrated and learned about Jewish holidays and traditions. As recently as six or seven years ago, we read Anne Frank at Sandy Run Middle School, books that were, by the way, donated by one of our district's own community members. My understanding is the Holocaust is now just a mention in the context of World War II studies, but not the corresponding brutality and genocide of so many. Maybe it's time to bring back some of this education. To coach in Upper Dublin, I had to spend over eight, to be a coach in Upper Dublin, I had to spend over eight hours of educational seminars on a range of topics. I wonder if the board is amenable to attending anti-bias training from organizations such as ADL or Stand With Us to better understand the current climate affecting the Jewish community. I want to wish our Jewish friends and neighbors a very happy Hanukkah. We are with you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Barrenbaum. I'm from Ambler, Pennsylvania. I wanted to finish Jaclyn's well-thought-out paper. It is time, time to educate because if any of our children ends up like the TikTok generation in colleges like Penn, Harvard, Princeton, Columbia, et cetera, we will be in way more trouble, not only as a community but as a nation. Teach love, not hate. Teach good, not evil. Teach history and facts, not fiction and propaganda. I want to point out one more thing while I'm up here. I don't know if any of you had had the chance to watch the hearing yesterday about antisemitism on college campus. One thing that was reiterated over and over again by the congressmen and women was how important it is to educate students as young as elementary school on the history of Israel, the Holocaust, and antisemitism. Israel is a friend to the United States and the only democracy in the Middle East. It is important to educate children with the facts. Everyone in this room knows that children are our future, and factual history and education is key. Never again is now. I am not going to stay silent. The Jewish people know where that gets us. Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Rabitz, Drescher. I'm actually a little nervous because it is a very uncomfortable situation when someone comes in and tries to explain antisemitism to you when they don't know what antisemitism is. So give me a moment to just catch myself, if that's okay, because this has been a very hard thing to sit through today. I think everyone knows the beautiful quote that Maya Angelou once said, which is, "When people show you who they are, believe them the first time." So the, the, the post that everyone's talking about, everyone has the right to speak out for people, for human rights, for, everybody wants beautiful humanitarian things to happen. But when you are promoting something that is one-sided and filled with propaganda, that is not appropriate, it's not, it's not okay. It, it's so hurtful to our community. And I'm sorry, I'm just very nervous right now, but when we came to the meeting back in November, every one of you said that we know your character, we know who you are, we know what you stand for, we know that you don't want bullying in Upper Dublin. So I guess I'm asking, like, when someone showed you who they are and what they're standing for, how do you stand with that person? I'm having a really hard time with that. I'm also having a hard time with, with the antisemitic graffiti in the bathroom. I was waiting to hear from any one of you, and there was silence. And how do you think that made us feel? How do you think that made our kids feel? To know that no statement was made for a week, and the school board, all of you represent all of us, you're supposed to, you're supposed to represent every single one of us, and nobody should be felt, made to be made felt that way in schools. Nobody should feel that they can't go into a restroom or to a classroom wondering what people are thinking of them, from any race, religion, gender, anything. But why is antisemitism left out of that? I, I don't understand. We have a beautiful community here. I love living in this community. I've been here over 18 years. This is the community that, like, we work, we work things out for each other, the tornado, anyone in need, this community, so many people in this room stand up and do beautiful things for each other. I'm just wondering, where is that for the Jewish community? We feel very alone, very frightened, very scared, and really hurt. It's very upsetting to sit here and hear propaganda coming from, from people that I feel do have good intentions. I don't think they've come here to, to be hurtful to people, but we have to recognize facts versus fiction versus propaganda. And I know I'm rambling, and I'm sorry, and I appreciate your time. I just, this is really hard to sit through, and it's really hard as, as a proud Jewish member of this community to sit through this and to hear what was allowed. So I really want you to think about what you're standing for and, and how you can represent everybody in this community and just hear what we're saying. Just please listen to the people that it's really affecting the most, hear what we're saying, please. That's all I ask when you are, are making decisions for us, for our community, for our school. Thank you for your time, and sorry.
Randy Windheim, Drescher. The Windheim family has lived in Upper Dublin for about 60 years. We are on our third generation of children in the schools, with grandchildren currently attending Thomas Fitzwater in Sandy Run. After spending the majority of my 40-year teaching career in UD, I retired this past June. It was a true pleasure working with all aspects of the UD community, including fellow teachers and staff members, the administrative team, parents, other community, community members, the school board, and of course, the students. I believe in my heart, there is no other school district that compares with the high quality of education that is provided to the students, as well as the positive and unique culture that has been truly accepting of all. It has been with incredible pride that I would say UD and the school district have been my home for more than three decades. Even these past several years, when aspects of public school education have been under attack, books have been banned, students have been ostracized for their sexual orientation and choices, historical and scientific curricula have been disparaged, it's been gratifying to think that UD has stayed above the fray. I didn't have one iota of worry about the impact of any family's religion. As a matter of fact, UD has accepted and celebrated the different cultures and religious celebrations of our community. My faith in the fact that UD seemed to be in our own bubble of safety and acceptance was shattered when the news broke of Ms. Abbarvia's social media post and antisemitic individuals she follows. Whether or not she publicly states she disagrees with antisemitic views, perception is reality. When the webinar she highlighted had a goal of creating curriculum K to 12 that invariably would be one-sided and not based on historical facts, as is happening with fast-spreading misinformation, I fear for our children. The fact that she continues to refuse to disavow the antisemites she follows raises alarm bells. As a matter of fact, she is hosting a panel in Boston this January with an avowed antisemite on the panel. How does this help the community judge her in a positive way? The damage has been done. Trust in our leaders is a vital part of the running of a school district. We must be able to trust that our leaders will do their due diligence before making any of their views public. We must be able to trust that our leaders do not associate with others who have hate in their heart for any particular group of people. We simply must be able to trust that our leaders could be effective and supportive of all members of UD. Unfortunately, Ms. Abbarvia has alienated a large percentage of the Upper Dublin community before she has even been sworn in. Her ability to be an effective leader has been destroyed. In order to move forward with trust and faith in the future of our school district, if Ms. Abbarvia eventually gets sworn in and she refuses to resign from the board, I urge you not to place her on committees that would have a direct impact on our community and students, such as the Policy and Education Curriculum Committees. In addition, as Ms. Vidalis mentioned, I respectfully ask each and every one of you if you would be amenable to attending anti-bias training from an organization such as the ADL or Stand With Us to help you truly understand the distress so many of us feel in the current climate affecting the Jewish community. Thank you.
Mr. Lind, I know I've spoken, I'm recalling the two minutes that I gave up because I thought we were going to proceed according to the, the section. If we have now reorganized the meeting in such a case that Section L will not be continued after the other comments have been made.
Mr. Lind, we will, we will have another opportunity for you to speak.
So, so we're not, we're not abandoning Section L.
No, we are not. Right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Irina Toyberman from Maple Glen. We are here again today requesting that Ms. Abbarvia resign from her position on the school board. Hate does not get out of control overnight or within mere seconds. Small steps, such as allowing someone with clear antisemitic values onto a school board, not having anyone else on, on the board or in any position of power in the district speak out against it, and having the individual continue to be supported by the Democratic Committee is what causes hate to snowball into a massive problem. We cannot allow this to happen in Upper Dublin. Despite Ms. Abbarvia's lackluster apology to the community, she has not taken any steps to remedy her clear distaste for Jewish people. She continues to follow on social media, organize events with, and work with a number of individuals who promote antisemitic rhetoric and propaganda. The language they use is identified by the ADL and other Jewish groups as antisemitic and hate speech. The goal of these individuals is not to help anyone, but rather to vilify Jewish people. The question that each one of you has to ask yourselves is, am I going to be an ally to the Jewish community? Am I going to do the right thing, or am I just going to be a cog in the antisemitism machine? The lack of action by the remaining members of the school board and the school administration has been especially distressing and shameful. Not only did no one condemn Ms. Abbarvia's actions, but the district has failed to act on multiple occasions. Anytime the district issued any statement to the community, it has been, Anytime the district issued any statement to the community, it has been, it has only been as a reaction to the outrage expressed by Jewish parents at the district's inaction. Not once has the district been proactive. We have yet to see a clear district-wide message against antisemitism. Dr. Dr. Feely's October 12th message was only sent after numerous Jewish parents contacted the superintendent and the building principals, and even then, the statements buried the lead and did not have a clear message against antisemitism. The closest we got was a half-hearted statement about everyone deserving dignity and respect. The further, the district further failed to condemn antisemitism after antisemitic graffiti was found at the high school. When I spoke with Dr. Feely on Tuesday, November 21st, and again asked why the district was only willing to make a statement to an extremely limited audience at a school board meeting, her response was that making a district-wide statement is against school policy. I ask you, was it also against school policy when the district sent out a letter stating that Upper Dublin, quote, "emphatically condemns racism"? Our district stands united with our African-American and Black students and families a few days after George Floyd's murder? Or how about when the district sent out a letter stating that the district, quote, "denounces bias, violence, and hate crimes towards Asian and Asian-American individuals in our community across the nation and around the globe during COVID"? So I ask you this, why are some minorities deserving of these messages and some are not? This is clear discrimination. This is clear antisemitism. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, those are admirable goals, but what do we call it when the same people who pride themselves on DEI are promoting antisemitism? Is there even a word for that kind of hypocrisy? Dr. Smith, welcome to Upper Dublin. I'm sorry, it is not always this exciting, I promise you. We sincerely hope you can do better than what we've seen from the administration these last few months. The children of Upper Dublin deserve better. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If there are any more people who want to make a statement, please come to the microphone so that we can hear your perspective. Please, I'm calling the meeting to order. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dr. Joan Frizzell, recently retired from teaching for 30 years at La Salle University, advanced pathophysiology, advanced pharmacology. I grew up in North Philly, attending North Philly public schools. I know what parents feel, what children feel like when their core or their internal parts make them feel that they're not safe, that something has happened and parents are concerned about the safety of their children. And I've been listening to all of these comments where parents have said, "What about me? What about my child?" I know from having been in academia for an extended period of time that it is the role of educators to challenge students, to move outside their comfort zone, to stretch their imaginations, and learn different perspectives. I also feel, after listening to these parents, that no child in public school, whether they be Muslim, Jewish, Christian, Hindu, atheist, should feel that they are unsafe, or unwelcome, or uncared for, or not capable of being educated or nurtured because their religion and their heritage is Muslim, Jewish, Christian, Hindu, or atheist. And I really ask board members and the community and teachers and everybody else to realize that there are both children and parents of different religious backgrounds, different ethnic heritages, who are feeling uncomfortable based on a lot of international events, but we have to care for and support the children. Because the children need to be in an environment that they feel safe, where their educational goals can be met without feeling put upon. So I ask you to really think about this for the future. I ask the parents to think about what's being said, because children are children. They need to be cared for and nurtured. Thank you.
Hello, Tamir Kuznetz, a resident of Upper Dublin. The reason I'm here tonight is to make my voice heard. I will not be silent about this. Last month, a newly-elected board member posted and requested people sign into a lecture which involved my country, Israel, and depicted them as oppressors, ethnic cleansers, apartheid rulers, and genocide creators. This person did not lead the discussion, but invited people to join in and listen. This tells me that Mrs. Ibarvia shares these views. She's also friends with proven antisemites on Facebook. If I knew one of my Facebook friends was racist, antisemitic, or anti-American, I would drop them in a heartbeat, yet this was not the case here. Yesterday, Representative John James asked the presidents of Harvard, UPenn, and MIT what they're going to do about the disturbing rise of antisemitism on college campuses across America as a result of October 7th. Their answer was a deafening silence. Nothing. Allowing their students to run around supporting terror with absolutely no recourse for their actions, is this what's going to happen here? Ms. Ibarvia joins the same woke movement of uneducated, pro-Hamas student protesters scattered across this nation. Anyone who utters the words "Free Palestine" and "From the river to the sea" is 100% okay with the idea that innocent civilians must live every second of every day with the idea of being blown apart from rockets launched with reckless abandon. Your child in the park playing with neighborhood friends may never come home. Take that in for a second. Free Palestine chanters are agreeing with innocent people being killed in their homes, women and children being gang raped, babies being disemboweled, burned alive, and people taken hostage for an undisclosed pathway to hell, especially if you are female. Free Palestine people are standing in line with a totalitarian regime that is anti-human rights, anti-gay, anti-women's rights, and are on a declared mission, first, to rid the world of all Jews, then Americans, then control and destroy the Western world. Ms. Ibarvia, don't be woke. Instead, wake up, read a little history, do your homework, dig deeper to find the truth, and don't just believe and expand on what your antisemitic friends are feeding you on Facebook. I would hate to think that you came up with your beliefs all by your own. Not only as a Jew, but as an American, I would be embarrassed to have this person sit shoulder to shoulder with me at the next board meeting. I would be ashamed to call her my colleague. I'm shocked and disappointed to have this person take a leadership role in my small community of Upper Dublin. I don't know how you can sit there and be okay with that. Last meeting, every one of you board members spoke of how terrible antisemitism is, how you all are against it, and how it should be abolished, yet all were hiding behind the same chicken shit answer that your hands are tied and there's nothing you can do about it. Leading people to sites that preach hate, false information, and antisemitism is not okay, it's not appropriate, and will not be tolerated by members of this community. You must realize who you're putting in charge, sitting right next to you, under your nose, and if you're not okay with it, use whatever means legally possible to get that person out of office. I don't want to hear "there's nothing you can do about it," and "your hands are tied." I don't have the patience to sit back down and take another negative comment, or not even a tiny hint of Jewish wrongdoing. And I certainly don't want to hear about it from the president of student education at Upper Dublin. We've been pushed around long enough. Ms. Ibarvia, before you attempt to educate Upper Dublin kids and my own three children, may I suggest you educate yourself first. You must by now realize the rift, your inexcusable Facebook blunders causing the Upper Dublin community, so do the right thing and resign your position.
I'm a lot shorter than he is. Hi, I'm Amy Nadell from Drescher, Pennsylvania. Dr. Smith, welcome. What a welcome that you're getting. I really want to reiterate what Tamir said and tell you that I was a graduate of Wissahickin High School. I graduated with six Ju-, I was one of six Jewish people who graduated from there and always felt the fear, and I think that if you're not Jewish, it's really, really difficult to understand. Perhaps if you're African-American, or Asian-American, or somebody that has experienced this, maybe you can better understand, but very easy if you are not a part of somebody that has had those oppressive things happen to them. I can understand you. What I can't understand is the members of this board that are a part of those groups. How you can sit silent, knowing that you are a part of one of these groups that has been oppressed? How you can be okay with allowing this woman to continue? And I'm with Tamir, there are things you can do. You don't have to make excuses for her. My son was a part of an antisemitic act when he was a freshman here. It was handled beautifully by the school district. The child that was involved was suspended and was forced to have education. Why are we not holding a newly-elected board member to the same standards? Why is it okay? And are we all sitting back? I don't understand. I walked in tonight, and there's a big "No Place for Hate" poster right outside this room! How? I feel like I live in the Twilight Zone. I don't understand what is happening. I don't understand if there is a "No Place for Hate," and that is what you are professing, that there's no place for hate here. How you are allowing this woman, who is a part of and promoting things that are hate? I don't understand any of it. I don't want innocent lives to be killed on either side, but people who are saying, "Oh, all these Palestinian lives are being killed," what about all these Israeli lives that are being killed? I don't understand it! I am missing something. This woman is causing controversy, she's causing problems, she is tone-deaf, she's not even here. I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear about her prior obligations. She knows that there is a problem with what she has done, and she's being a coward and not facing what has happened and the impact it has had. And what I'm asking all of you to do is to please look in the mirror and think about how you feel about sitting next to this woman, as Tamir said, shoulder to shoulder. I don't want her representing my community or my child, and it frightens me. And unless you, like I said, unless you are a part of an oppressed community, you can't understand. But for those of you who are, I really ask you to dig deep and think about what you can do to make this okay in this community, because if this had happened in a general population, the person would have been fired, but why? Why is it okay? I love what you said about how it's okay for certain populations to be called out, but it's not okay to stand with the Jewish community. It's just not acceptable, it's not appropriate, and it is not Upper Dublin. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Bush. I'm from Ambler. I am an educator. I've been an educator for 25 years, so I'm actually going to direct it maybe to, like, the lawyer and the superintendent. I agree with what everyone is saying. As an educator, I want to know this.
Please, please, can you address the board?
Sure, I'll address the board. I want to know this. When graffiti is found in a bathroom, a girl's bathroom, I have a 15-year-old that goes to this school, and she walks in the bathroom and she sees it, what exactly is the protocol? And I don't want it just like you tell me. I want a written-down protocol. Where I teach, we have protocols. I want to know, why did I wait six days, heard nothing, emailed the principal, got a lovely response back? The next day is when my students, two of them I have here, heard we shouldn't do that on an announcement during homeroom, when no one listens. Then I got an email, which was a really great email, but it was seven days from the time that a picture showed up on Facebook. I don't know for sure, but I'm pretty sure it happened before the picture happened on Facebook. So I want to know legally, district-wide, what is the protocol when this happens for any graffiti in any group? I want to know that protocol. And I like it written down, and like, make it a policy so that everybody that's represented in this community knows what they have. Because if there is a protocol, it is, there is no way you followed it. No way. If you did, that's a really bad policy and protocol. Thanks.
Seeing no other people come up to the microphone, I'm going to close public participation. Oh, sorry.
I'm Levine Fort Washington. I spoke at the last board meeting. Not the last one, the one before. After the last meeting, I had a lot of questions after an apology. I don't know how many other people did in this community, but I reached out directly to Ms. Ibarvia. I met with her, I will not share the contents of that conversation. I am not going to speak for her, that would be inappropriate. I will share with you, though, what I told her at the end of our conversation. Number one, I believe your blind spots are much deeper than you realize. Number two, you do not have the trust of the community to represent this entire community. I spoke last time about diversity, equity, inclusion, the work I do with adults with disabilities, the importance of inclusion. I believe as leaders, we have a moral responsibility for leadership, and one where we can, when we step into a role in a public forum, to truly be able to represent the people who have elected us. I don't believe, at this juncture, that she has the trust to do that. Third, in no uncertain terms, I told her it was really important to be here. I thought it was very important to be here, to show and speak, and hear directly from the people who I anticipated would likely come here. I also told her that actions speak louder than words. Words are one thing, taking an action is another. I suggested that she step down, but I also stated that I did not want her to step down and just slither away. I asked her to step down and make a statement to this community, to everyone in this community, to become educated, to learn as much as she possibly could, to collaborate and build bridges with many of the people that are here and many who aren't, and to work towards shared goals. And most importantly, as I tell my students, it takes a long time to build trust, it can be lost in an instant, but it also can be earned again. I really, really believe that responsible and moral leadership is what is being called for today. To this board, I think a lot of people spoke very clearly about their disappointment in statements that were not made, obvious omissions when similar types of situations have brought statements from this board, and there seem to be a double standard. Again, we all need to reflect, to learn, to educate. I would like for this board to think about what you can do with respect to responsible and moral leadership, not what you can't do legally. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else coming up to the microphone, I'm going to close public participation. I do want to mention that we have received about 18 pieces of written input, which all board members have had a chance to see. I also want to thank everybody who came here tonight. I appreciate very much, and I think my board colleagues do too. I appreciate very much, and I think my board colleagues do too, your sharing your perspectives and also your willingness to let others speak and listen. I know it's extremely difficult. And antisemitism has no home here in Upper Dublin. So with that, I would like to move on to the next point on the agenda, which is the election of the board president. Nominations are now in order for the board president. And so I'm going to ask if anybody has anybody to nominate.
Yes, I would like to nominate Jeff Wallach for board president.
Great. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, then I move to close these nominations. Is there a second? All right, Mr. Sirota, second. So all in favor of closing nominations signify this by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Anyone opposed? Right, the motion carries. Mr. Wallach, while you are at home. Oh, sorry, we still have to vote. I'm, my, my bad. See, this is why I'm only temporary. Since there's only one nomination, all in favor for Mr. Wallach as our president signify this by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, I think, or is there anybody opposed? No, so the motion carries. And now I congratulate Mr. Wallach. And do you want to say a few words, Mr. Wallach? If you can? Thank you, Mr. Wallach, and congratulations. Now, since, since Mr. Wallach is not able to be with us, I will continue on to the next item on the agenda, which is the election of the vice president. So I'm now asking for nominations for the office of vice president.
I nominate Mark Sirota.
All right, thank you. Is there, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the nominations. And is there, are I move to close it? Or is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. So all in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, and the motion carries. So since there is only one nomination, all in favor of Mr. Sirota for vice president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Since there, all right, anyone opposed? The motion carries. And with this, I congratulate Mr. Sirota. And I gladly hand over the microphone to Mr. Sirota, who will, as newly elected vice president, carry the meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, normally the newly elected president would be running the meeting from this point. But since he's not here, and that would be awkward, I will facilitate the remainder of the meeting. And let's continue on with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the election of our assistant board secretary. I will nominate Ms. Evans to continue on as our assistant board secretary. Are there any other nominations?
I just want to clarify, we're talking about Brooke Evans, not Jenna Evans.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Brooke Evans, yes, appreciate that clarification. Are there any other nominations? All right, so is there a motion to close nominations?
I move.
All right, is there, thank you, Jenna Evans. Is there, is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Iannidi. So all in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, nominations are closed. All in favor of Brooke Evans for assistant secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that carries. Congratulations, Brooke, and thank you. Let's see, there are some other items on the agenda to take care of. Moving on to section K, our other business recommendations. For the first item, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Redding.
Thank you. I am proud to announce that we have a recommended new school board of directors for approval for tonight. Director of Student Services, thank you.
All right, are you making that motion?
I am making that motion for Jennifer Summers.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Iannidi. Any comments or questions on the motion? Right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, that carries. Did you have any comments, Dr. Smith?
Yes, I would certainly like to just share that it is our pleasure to have Mrs. Jennifer Summers here with us. And she has, some of her family has come to support her this evening to serve as the district's next director of student services. We are over the moon excited for her to be here. She quickly rose to the top of our candidate pool when we were looking for somebody to fill this particular role. There was a rigorous, multiple interviews that she went through and lots of different stakeholders, including parent representation. She demonstrated high competency in the many areas that her position will be responsible for and certainly understands systems and processes in those areas. But first and foremost, her passion for students and for special education was clear from the very first moment we met her to the end of the interview process. And she comes extremely highly recommended. Just a little bio, undergraduate work was completed at Millersville, where she earned her certification as a special education teacher. She has a master's of education from Holy Family University and also holds a special education supervisory certificate. She has previous experience as an autistic support teacher, program specialist, and supervisor of elementary special education, and currently serves as a director of people services in a neighboring district. This is a critical position that supports all of our students and our staff and our executive leadership team and school board are just thrilled to have you joining us and think you'll be a great addition to the team. So thank you very much. And if you'd like to say a few words, you can.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I'm so excited to be joining the Upper Dublin team and community. My story in education has always been within student services and advocating for students and what they need in order to succeed. So I'm honored to have the opportunity to work together with staff, students, parents, community, administrators, to work together to make sure and to continue to ensure that students continue to get access to what they need so they can reach their fullest potential. So thank you again, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, and welcome. All right, we have two other appointments to make. First, I would like to nominate Ms. Sherpier for our seat on the, on the MCIU board. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Evans. Any comments or questions on that motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, congratulations. And we appreciate your, your taking the time to do that. I would also like to nominate Ms. Iannidi to serve in our slot on the board at the Eastern Center for Arts and Technology. So I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Sherpier. Any comments or questions on that motion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and congratulations and thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
So with that, we are up to our second opportunity for public participation. This covers any topics that you would like to address, not just those on the agenda. And you will have four minutes. Again, as before, please state your name and where in the district you reside. And as a reminder, please address your comments to the board as a whole. And if anyone would like to address the board, please come to the microphone.
Jenny Vitella, Ambler. I'm just curious, in this day of electronic age and the fact that our students were educated virtually for over a year, why Ms. Barvia was unable to attend when our very sick and esteemed president was able to remotely? I think that, again, not coming to the meeting is very telling and unfortunate that she should have been here, even if remotely, even if she's sworn in, we figured it out with someone who's sick. Thank you.
Anita Brister, Fort Washington. Let me start with what I think may be as simple. I believe there's a board policy, I don't know if it's policy or protocol, but for as long as I've attended board meetings, which is a heck of a long time, the protocol has been to give your full name when you speak at public input and the area you're from, Fort Washington, Drescher, Ambler, whatever. And that, the board should have responded with, with much clarity tonight because I believe that speaker, one speaker only gave their first name. I'm not positive because it was getting very chaotic and I couldn't hear that well. But please clarify that. The rules about speaking have to apply to everybody. I believe it is full name and the area you're from in Upper Dublin because you do have a policy about residency. I wanted to follow up on a couple of things other people said. One that I guess what I think is probably the most important, a question was asked by, I don't know, two, three people that the board did not address. I'm hoping you will address it before this meeting is over. And I think you, I mean, you can't really address it for each other. Each person would have to speak for themselves. Is this school board willing to have anti-bias training from an organization like the Anti-Defamation League or a similar organization? No one addressed that. And maybe there's a difference of opinion on the board, but it would be nice to hear from each of you. Are you willing to have that anti-bias training? There's clearly a lot of hurt about what has happened in this community. I've lived here 32 years, I think, never, I mean, if there, I was really even not aware that there were some antisemitic incidences at the high school, except for this recent one. And that brings me to my next point, which is the, the high school bathroom incident, the girls' bathroom and antisemitic graffiti. It sounds like that was not addressed in an appropriate way because it should have been addressed very clearly and very quickly to both the students and the parents. And the more you delay on something like that, the more it looks like the district almost supports antisemitic graffiti. And it's just not transparent, it's not good communication. So I want to know more about how that was handled and what you're going to do next time if there is, God forbid, if there is a next time. Because that's certainly not making any students feel safe and welcome. Jenny brought up the diary of Anne Frank. I am fairly sure my kids had it and they're in their mid-30s. Well, they're young, young 30s, we'll say. They wouldn't want to tell, I'm not supposed to tell anybody's age. But my point is, I'm pretty sure it was part of the Upper Dublin curriculum. And I actually thought it was part of the Upper Dublin curriculum until maybe five, six years ago. If anyone could address, you know, I know it's not, I know there's another meeting after this, but I, I would like to know, why was it pulled out? That's an excellent book. And I definitely will make it my mission to know a little bit more about the Holocaust education. Because I, again, I thought Upper Dublin was strong on that. So I'm going to be requesting information on what, what grades and what subjects does this district teach Holocaust education? I guess I want to see the materials. Because you're failing if we have antisemitism in this community.
My name is Melissa Behrman. I'm from Ambler, Pennsylvania. Several years ago, my husband and I personally put out hundreds of dollars and purchased Anne Frank books for the district. And it was about three or four families that put out money. We probably put up about $500, $600. And we had been told by the school that they were going to use it into their curriculum. That was part of the agreement of why we tried so hard. And we handed the books over and we let a few years go by and we did find out that the books were being extraordinarily underutilized to the point where they were either not being read at all, or they were reading about one paragraph out of the whole book. My husband and I then sat and this was devastating to us. So we did decide to ask the district for some clarification. And we were really disappointed. Nobody really, so we ended up asking for the books back, which the district gave us back. We interviewed other districts to see if we could donate them to another district that would be willing to use the books. And we later decided instead to open up our home and give the books out to anybody in the surrounding area that promised us that they would read the book. To this day, we do have a few copies in our basement, but, you know, we tried. And, you know, so, but I just wanted to introduce myself. So if you, if you want to talk to my husband or I, we're happy to talk to you about our experience. But we did have over 300 copies of Anne Frank purchased for the district and it was severely underutilized.
Andy Kessler, Fort Washington. So this is your organizational meeting. And it is telling and disturbing that Ms. Barvia is not in attendance to listen to the concerns of this community. And it speaks to her character and it speaks to her fitness to hold this position, that she is not here to listen to what was said this evening, either in person or virtually. Ms. Barvia has issued a statement indicating her intention to be sworn in as a member of this board. And I may be incorrect in this, but I, I would think that the purpose of your organizational meeting was to assign members of the board to your three committees to finance, policy, and education. So with all of us in attendance here today, I'm going to directly ask this board whether Ms. Barvia has been assigned or will be assigned, based upon her intention to become a member of this board, to the education or the policy committee. And for that information to be shared with all of us while we are here now, as opposed to at some other time, at some other place, when she quietly takes an oath of office under cover of darkness, so to speak. We want to hear it now, while we're all here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I wasn't planning to speak. My name is Barbara Mass. I'm from Fort Washington. I also am a teacher here, so it's really uncomfortable for me. I do want to welcome you. I'm really excited. I'm a math teacher. I do want to welcome you, I'm really excited, I'm a math teacher. So I'm just asking you guys to remember that this is the community that came together when we were broken, when people were out of their homes, when people were just crushed, my neighbor died. So this is a community that wants support, and we look to our leaders, and we want positive leaders, and I'm excited to see some positivity, and some strong bonds, and some just great stuff from everybody who's just joining us now. Good luck. So I wasn't planning to speak, I'm a terrible public speaker, but I'm just speaking from the heart, and I'm just looking for you guys to look at a broken community again in a different way, and to take that positive stance, and to help us grow, and to help us heal. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else come to the mic, I'll close this period of public participation. And I'm going to comment on a few things, and of course, then I'll turn it over to other members of the Boarder Administration if you have things to comment on. Regarding the committee assignments, the way it works is that it is up to the president of the board to make those assignments. We don't know who the president is going to be until this meeting, so we don't have that on the agenda. However, I do know that Mr. Wallach anticipated or hoped perhaps to be elected president and was prepared with that, and so at least some of the committees, I think, he has made those assignments. And Brooke, do you have that available to show? Thank you. So to answer the question that several people have asked, what committees will Ms. Abarvia be assigned to, she's, because she hasn't been sworn in, she's not on any of them, but there are already four members of both Education and Policy listed there. So she won't have a seat on either of those committees. But again, that is, that is the president's prerogative. Several people asked, would we be willing to go through anti-bias training? So there is required training of board members. Anti-bias training is sadly not a part of that. That requirement comes from the legislature. I personally, I can only speak for myself, I would be happy to go through that, I've certainly gone through anti-bias training in other aspects of my career in the past, and certainly willing to do it again, it's always eye-opening. And, you know, I'm not speaking for anybody else, we have no specific plans, but certainly could look into that. When this all, this issue that at least most of you came tonight to talk about came up, I was away, so I was not at the last meeting when this was last discussed. Several people asked, how can you sit there and be okay with Ms. Abarvia sitting alongside us? So I do want to comment from my own, just for myself again, on that point. People are frustrated when we say it's not up to us whether she'll be seated on the board, but it's not up to us whether she'll be seated on the board. It's just how it is, and almost nothing in American democracy is more sacred than the will of the voters. It wouldn't be good if we actually had the ability to override the will of the voters. That is, you know, that's critical, and so she has been elected, and so it is up to her, if she chooses to take the oath of office. For my part, I will say that, as a reminder, no individual board member, and I'll say this to the members of the board, no individual board member has any authority to do anything by themselves. None. We have really, the president is given a little bit of authority over the operation of the board and things like assigning committee members, very limited. That's really all, very, pretty much all the president has the authority to do beyond the rest of us. And none of us have any authority to do anything individually. We can only do things through the will of the majority. And so it's really, if any board member wants to accomplish anything, it is up to us to persuade at least four others to go along with it. So if Ms. Abarvia chooses to be seated alongside us here on the board, if she wants to make anything, you know, take any initiative on her own, she's going to have to persuade four of us to go along with it. And, you know, she's starting from a difficult position, for sure, if she chooses to do that. As somebody did comment, you know, your reputation can be destroyed in an instant, but can be earned back, and so she's going to have to earn it if she wants to do that. So that's my position on how I'm okay with it. Let's see. I think that's all I want to comment. Do any other board members have comments you wish to make?
So I do not. My heart is here, and I hear you. I'll say this, I'm glad that we had a little bit of time. I was not at the last meeting for my own personal reasons. What I'll say about me is, when I sat here last year to interview for the position, one of the ways that I answered it is I moved here from a very orthodox community and nannied for a family from Israel for a decade. And during that time with them, I was able to gleam the culture. On October 7th, when I saw what happened, my first text was to the family that I have continued growing my life with, who currently live in Israel right now. The community that I'm from, that I graduated from, that I moved my kids from, was one of the most diverse cities in northern New Jersey, where I went to school with all religions, all colors, all creeds. What I won't do is pretend that I can speak on behalf of Jewish people, just like I would not want anyone to speak on behalf of how I am represented by birth here, as an African-American black woman. But what I will say is that my heart is with our community here, my heart is with the pain that I feel radiating in this room right now. And that I stand with our Jewish community during this time of pain. When I decided to run for the board, and I have a very full life outside of this, I thought, how do I hold the community the way that I would hold my own children who graduated? One is a freshman, and the other is a sophomore here. And I vowed to hold the children of this community the way that I hold my own children, with love and respect for all people. And as I stand here with the opportunity to serve this community, I will always stand for all students. And I know the heart of the people of this board, I've run with them. And what I can say is that we hear you, I hear you. Your words don't land softly on me. And I wonder how we, and this is something for the board and for Dr. Smith, is how do we take this opportunity to lean in, to grow, to develop, and to stand for what we believe in, and what the people in this room believe in? So I say that, that you have my ear, you have my heart, and you have my commitment to all the students, including the Jewish students of this community, to do what's best and what's right. So thank you.
Any other board members dare to follow that?
Yeah, exactly, this is a very tough act to follow. But as far as the anti-bias training, I think absolutely that should be for all of us, and perhaps for our community as a whole. I don't know how we do that, but I think there is a way that we can, should be able to facilitate some of that.
I knew I should have snuck in before you. Yeah, I always, I'm never as eloquent as Aleema is, and if it didn't sound trite, I would say ditto to everything she said, but I want to say a little bit more than that. So I did make some comments at our meeting on November 15th, and I won't repeat all of them, but I want to reiterate just a couple things. So first and foremost, as Aleema, again, much more eloquently than I can, said, I took this role because I care about students first and foremost, but, you know, also our staff, our community. I love Upper Dublin, I've lived here since 2009, long time. So please know that, and it's a saying that Dr. Yanni used to have, but, you know, your kids are my kids too, when I sit here. I have three kids in the district, my husband works for the district, the district is very important to me, and it's very important to me that we set the right tone for the kind of district that we want to be, the kind of community we want to be. It's something we spend a lot of time on and work very hard on. So please know, there is no place for hate in Upper Dublin. It's a saying that gets used a lot, but it's really true, and there's not really a better way to say it. But, you know, speaking directly to our Jewish community that I know is hurting, right? We learned this, some folks made reference to, you know, the George Floyd situation, and we learned that in times where a particular community is hurting, it's important to reach out to them specifically, right? Of course, all kids matter all the time, right? But clearly, we have a particular community that's in a lot of pain. So I want to speak directly to that community, that I heard everything you said, I take notes, because I like to remember what people said. And you are seen and you are heard, and, you know, speaking for myself, but I know a lot of the people sitting up here very well, and so to some extent, I'll speak for them as well, just because I know where their hearts are as well. That we will protect your children, that's our mandate, something we take really seriously. So please know, we're going to do everything we can to create a safe space for your kids, to maintain what I think is a safe space for your kids overall. But please know that you are seen, you are heard. I really appreciate folks sharing their, again, very, very personal stories. So again, there's no place for hate, no place for antisemitism, and similarly, we stand with our Jewish community. And I do think in times like this, it's an opportunity for us to grow. So I'll echo the comments of my fellow board members as well. I'm certainly happy to go through anti-bias training, it's something that I do, it's part of my job, I'm a chief compliance officer by day, so I give out training all the time, and so I'm happy to take it as well. I've specifically spoken about anti-bias training, it's actually very enlightening for people who take it. So if you haven't had the opportunity to go through it, I think it's something that everybody should do. But yeah, absolutely happy to do it, I think it's an important path to growth for all of us, so, thank you.
Stu.
Welcome.
Yes.
First thing I have to do is learn how to use the microphone. Thanks. I'm Stu Warshower, for those of you that I don't know, and I first want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. I want to say three things, and I want to respond to some of the comments. I've served as a teacher and a school administrator for the last 21 years, and I think what I've learned during that time is that you can judge a lot about a school community, about how it protects and nurtures its most vulnerable students. And I can say to this crowd that you have my commitment, that I will always look out for that. As for the ADL training, absolutely, I'm 100% in favor of that. And third, there was an issue brought up specifically about the book Anne Frank, and about curricular matters, and one thing that I'm excited to do as a board member is to listen and then engage in those conversations as a member of the Education Committee. So thank you all, I'm taking it all in, I appreciate you coming out tonight, thanks.
Any others?
I'm Harry Beth.
Welcome to you also.
So I really want to thank everyone for their heartfelt, brave comments tonight. I listened to every word, and my heart is with everybody, and I'm really sensitive to the challenges faced by our community. Prior to joining the board here, I served on the Human Relations Commission, two terms for Upper Dublin, and continue to serve on that commission, and recently helped with bringing the ADL to Upper Dublin in September for a talk. And there were some negative events that happened around having that event, that were really eye-opening to me, and really brought to light that antisemitism is real, and it's here, and it's insidious, and it's really scary. So I just appreciate you guys coming here and sharing your thoughts, and, you know, bringing all of that to light. And of course, I would be willing to do that again. My heart really hurt about all of this, and I reached out to my HRC colleagues to get their feedback and input, and actually spoke with the regional director of the HRC as well, just to get his input on the situation. And he was also involved in the situation in Colonial, and he was able to share some insight with me, just so that I could process all of this information and educate myself. Obviously, I'm just getting acclimated here on the board, so it's going to take me some time to figure out how to play this all out and act in a way that's going to protect all of our kids. So just be patient with me while I figure that all out and figure out how things work. But anyone who knows me is that I'm truly dedicated to fostering the most wonderful community that we can have here. I've served the community during the tornado and lots of different ways, and will continue to do that. Sometimes a political vitriol can be a lot to handle, and I convened a civility summit to get everybody together talking at, I think that was in 2019, and I think that's key, is keeping these conversations going, people feeling safe and brave to come and talk about how they're hurting, and how we can help each other and support each other. So I really, truly believe that we can create an environment where we can encourage empathy and a shared commitment to the well-being of every single kid in our community.
Jeff, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to just real briefly say thank you to everyone that came tonight and shared in person, thank you to everyone that submitted public comments. I'm not going to do justice to topping what Ms. Redding, or Ms. Evans, or Mr. Sirota, or anybody else that spoke said, other than to say, I hear you, and we hear you, we hear the pain and the anguish. And I thought one comment from a community member, asking us to help the community to grow and heal, and that's really what we need to do now, and what, as the newly empanelled president of this board, you have my word and my commitment, that that is what we need to do, and that's what we will do. So please know that. As Mr. Sirota eloquently shared, I did prepare on the hope or the instinct that I might be for another term of president, the committee positions, and they were shared. And most definitely, I would be open to ADL anti-bias training, or any other anti-bias training. As part of my job, I have done both bias training and implicit As part of my job, I have done both bias training and implicit bias training, which is oftentimes its own separate component and is often exceedingly eye-opening, in my opinion as well. And I am all for that on behalf of the Board as part of my, and what I will represent is the Board's district, to growing and healing within our community. So thank you all.
I will be really brief. Thank everyone for coming and sharing their struggles. It is a learning process, and it's so important to see you in person and hear that emotion and so that I can understand better. And I spoke last time when Tricia was here, and you can go back and see those comments, but I'll just say real quick, I condemn all types of hate, including antisemitism. And I'm definitely open to the training if we can make that happen. I think that's important. Thanks.
All right. While these comments have been going on, there's one other comment I wanted to address. There was a question about the stating your name portion of the requirement. So that all comes out of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law. The Sunshine Act does not specifically say that commenters must state their name or where they're from, but our Board policy asks people, and it's exactly as it's written in its policy, or Board Operating Guidelines 006, which is echoed exactly in the agenda. So you can see the wording right in the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name and the location in the district. The purpose of that is to satisfy the Sunshine Act requirement. The Sunshine Act provides, that provision is there so that members of the residents or taxpayers of the community can address the Board before we make decisions. That's the entire purpose of it, so that we hear, we have an opportunity to hear from the community how we should vote on things that we may be voting on. So the reason that's in there is just to ensure that the people who are commenting are eligible to comment. It could perhaps be strengthened, the language in the policy and therefore in the agenda is, you know, it just says state their name. It's not any more specific than that. There are other Boards that I've seen do have significantly more stringent policies around how they manage that. You have to sign up ahead of time and all kinds of other things. We don't normally do that. But we could certainly look into whether that's sufficient, and that would be a policy meeting discussion at some point in the future when we next visit 006. Are there any final comments, or do you have anything from the Administration? Dr. Smith?
I do. Thank you. I know it is late in the evening, and we have two more meetings that we're going to get through as a Board here, but it is my first meeting, so I do want to take the opportunity, first and foremost, to thank all of you for coming. I know it can be really difficult to come out when there are topics like this and to stand in front of your peers and your neighbors and to share your opinions, but I really do appreciate that and have certainly taken a lot in today, but appreciate you being here. I would like to just say thank you to everybody for the very warm welcome that I have gotten into the district, from students that I have seen to staff, to parents that I was able to meet. It's just been wonderful, and today was a great day, as I was officially sworn in at the Montgomery County Courthouse this morning. So that was a nice ceremony for us and for our team to be part of. I welcome our new Board members to the Board, and I look forward to working with the newly-elected Board and those that have been on for a while, as well as the executive leadership team. Just looking forward to a bright year ahead of us. I do want to say that last night I was able to go to the wonderful band concert at Sandy Run Middle School with Dr. Ortiz, and just a great way to kick off our holiday season, as well as to celebrate the talents of our students. Certainly, the middle school students did an amazing job, and I am sure that they are rocking it here tonight in the high school as well. I know many of you may have hoped to attend that, and that's why we're here, right? It is about our students. So I'll just end by saying that I know you need to get to know me, and I have to prove myself to you, but I believe in all students, each and every one of them, and I will work very hard and am committed to making sure that your child, your family, our staff, everybody feels like they belong here at Upper Dublin. That is something that really drew me to the community, and I am committed to continuing that here. It is disheartening to know that a portion of our community is hurting right now, and we want to help. So I'm going to take some of this in and then talk with our team, and certainly we will look into any of the trainings. You can reach out if you have something to suggest to me. I'll work with Mr. Hoffman, just so that I have a better understanding of our curriculum and where we teach certain things, and we can certainly share that as well. But please know that we are committed to making sure that each and every stakeholder here feels that they belong, and I hope to interact with you in the future. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And it is now 8 o'clock. We will adjourn the reorganization meeting. We'll reset in about five minutes for the Education meeting, Education Committee meeting, and as a reminder, the Policy Committee meeting will follow the Education Committee meeting. Thank you.